The progress rate of our party was founded more than fifty years ago on the principle that it is our duty to educate and help the public with factual information on the issues of the data. It also offers the opportunity to stay connected with those who we wish to serve. It's hard to imagine that a reform in the sector is the bedrock of any thriving democracy. And we welcome your scrutiny, your assessment, and your ideas so that you can compare and make the difference. Tonight, we return to the subject of the air travel waiting hour line that we covered in a similar form almost seven months ago at Paris' promisal tonight's two presentations. As such, invited a 200-page damaging report by the entitled "Appraisal of Bermuda Airport Development Business Case dated April 2015", we gather again tonight to have our two shadow ministers expound on this report. It is a 200-page report. No one is going to be a page on the second of that including me. It actually could be referred to as an indictment on the minister and the process employed by the government. I provided tonight a copy of the executive summary, which is five pages, and an actual recital we didn't have access to before we walked. But even if you go through my scant scan, as I said, it's 200 pages. If you start page 88 and go to page 200, you will find the following comment countless numbers of times, and I quote, "The data contents do not align with any evidence requirements listed in this criteria and code." That translated in English to, "BTS, you don't know what they have when you're here. That's why they're prosperous." And in the other jurisdiction, at the very least, the presentation number of reports such as this would result in the minister being informed of this. That's all that happened. And certainly, the person who would be in charge of the government would launch a new investigation. You do not commission a report that provides an indictment to the government and the internal agency even then nor some of you responsible for the content of this should have been filed. In any case, two of the brightest nonprofits in the field of the shadow academy are Dr. Lee and Shadow Finance Minister Mr. David Burke and our Shadow Transport Minister Mr. Paul Scott. I've been introducing this report, but also set out an alternative plan. How old people, I say, in January of 2020? Neither of these gentlemen needs much of an introduction. As I say, both have acquitted themselves admirably since being elected to Parliament in 2020. We shall have both presentations and a question around this period. You can say the same thing about both. They don't just criticize bad government financing programs, but they're all of sensible alternatives. That's what we look at tonight, sensible alternatives. To the government in particular, I introduce and welcome to the microphone our Deputy Leader and Shadow Minister of Finance, Mr. David Burke.
Thank you very much for your words today. Good evening, everyone. I don't think you'd mind if I don't need a seat while I present. It'll just make it easier to refer to my notes, but I don't think you can see the screen here today. Okay, so, to begin, the first advice is that I will remember the first time all of you had, which was at Francis' Pat. I want to say that was in November. And I ended up reading a report about that in the 2,000-page documents that were released by the People's Campaign. So I'm just asking if there's anyone here for ACON if they'd like to just recognize themselves so I can know who's going to report that. Anyone? Okay. We'll move on. Because I have a difficult task today attempting to compress 200 pages into 20 minutes. And that's all of the Lord reported. But right now, before I go there, I'd like to start with what we have been told about the airport. And I'd like to take this from a financial perspective because I think it's very important that we understand what the Waterbury Alliance is actually doing. Guarantee is on time and on budget. Now, as has been said many, many times before, there is no such thing as a free lunch. Something has to give. We're definitely not going to get the new airports article for free. It's just not going to work like that. So let us go ahead and take a peek over at the numbers and see. Now, this is a slide that was represented on our last two meetings. And I did that on one of them because I think it's important. Because it shows what was the picture before this last one. In 2014, the airport collected $25.2 million in revenue. And the expenses at the airport were $20.56 million. And that means that the airport generated an annual surplus of $4.67 billion. Now, that is in 2014. So the airport is one of the few profitable partners in the government. Now, understand, if it's profitable, that means it makes us money. It's not losing money, it's making money. However, in order to build an airport, we're going to be bored in the surplus of the $4.67 million. So the Waterbury Alliance, we need to find more money in order to pay ACON so ACON can pay off their loan. Now, by the way, because we keep on hearing that the government of Bermuda is not going to borrow any money. But what's going to happen is, ACON is going to borrow the money for us and use our revenue to pay the money back. So it doesn't matter, we borrow the money or ACON's borrowing money, the money is still being borrowed. The only difference is that it doesn't show up on our budget. But yet, the money is still being borrowed against our airport and we're still paying it back against the revenue of our airport. So, what's important is that we need more revenue. So how are we going to get more revenue? Well, we're definitely looking for a solid client out of the airport. We definitely might get more revenue from airspace control. And we do know that the Waterbury Alliance has increased taxes. So, if you take the card revenue issue, the Waterbury Alliance need an additional $8 million to build a $200 million facility. Now, as I said before, there was not enough money to build a new terminal. However, now, the situation has changed. And how do I say that? The Waterbury Alliance found more money, a lot more, as a matter of that. Because if you remember from the People's Campaign documents, which all pay for the card of 2,000 pages, we know that there was a funding gap which was mentioned. And to find, to fill that funding gap, the Waterbury Alliance introduced $11.5 million in taxes. So now, this means the airport, which was only making $4.5 million before, is now turning a profit of $16 million annually. That's right, our airport is now profiting to the tune of $16 million. That means that all of the $16 million surplus will go to ACON to repay their loan for the terminal. So remember, with that amount of money, we can't borrow money. But we raised taxes at the airport, and now all of that money is going to go to Canada to repay the loan. Now, let's just figure out how much revenue that is over time. Because not only because we see that the taxes have increased before when I was talking about a billion dollars, but over the course of this contract, ACON stands to collect overalls or in excess of $2 billion. Now, that is total revenue, that doesn't take into account expenses, but that gives you a lot of money. As I said, in 2014, the airport collected $25.2 billion revenue. But due to the $35 in taxes at the airport, the airport will now take in $36.7 billion revenue. Now, if you take $36.7 and you times that by 35 years, that is $1.285 billion. And that is assuming that the favors are going to, the taxes are going to stay the same for the next 35 years. But we know that's not the case. We know that's going to be inflation, we know that the fees are going to go up. Now, development, and it's a thing called the Miami Theory, where everything goes up by 5% a year. I'm sorry, 5% every two years. If we go ahead and we take that and assume that 5% every two years and use 2.5% a year, when we take that and factor that inflation in, 35 years times $36.7 million times 2.5% inflation a year, it equates to $2.015 billion of total revenue at the airport that would be under the control of ACON. That is the amount of money which we're talking. So when we talk about how Waterbury Alliance had to have, they've made up the money for this project. And as mine have said, that this project actually went to capital on Tuesday. So despite all of the recommendations, all of the gaps that were identified in this report, the Waterbury Alliance seems determined to push this project through for one reason. And for those of you all who get birds today, if not, there's a lot of column by Larry Burson. And Larry Burson said that, and by his calculations in this budget, ACON stands to make $620 million in profit. You have to leave this island over the next 35 years. Now, if you're going to privatize something, you're going to privatize something because no one's going to take something that doesn't make any money. $620 million over the next 35 years could do a lot for our debt, could do a lot for our students, it could do a lot for our seniors, it could do a lot for a lot of things. But right now, that's not where the Waterbury Alliance is going. So I think that that's important, that we understand change in the financial situation so we can understand the volume of money which was flowing around. Now, one of the main things which I want to highlight, which is the Deloitte Report. And understanding that this report is 200 pages. However, Colonel Burke said it has the executive summary, which basically covers most of the stuff inside the report. But it is a very good report, three. It was commissioned, was delivered in May 2005, and was paid for by the UK government and the Bermuda government. And it measures the OPE's approach against what is called her managed strategy REMO, which is the UK standard for public sector procurement. And how they define what a full business case is, and this is something that is important. It says that policies, strategies, programs, and projects will only achieve their spending objective and deliver benefits if they have the scope of us and plan realistically from the outset. And the associated risks taken into account. The business case, both as the bottom and a process, provides decision makers, transparent decision-making, sorry, provides decision makers, stakeholders, and the public with an actual tool for evidence-based and transparent decision-making and a framework for liquid, prudent, performance, and monitoring of results received. Now, that's a lot of work, but the main thing that I'm saying when I say that is, in order to make sure that we have a correct business case, especially when you're talking about that much money, you have to make sure that you have planned appropriately, got it all in your eyes, crossed all your teeth before you move into the project. What is also important is that because of all the gaps that were identified by the report, the UK's letter of trustment said, it said two things. It said that United Human Government and the government of Bermuda must agree on what measures are required to address deficiencies that were identified independently in their assessment report. And the government of Bermuda must publish a written and evidence-based assurance that the required measures have been taken before the contract can be removed. So it seems as though United Human is attempting to put some protection to make sure, to make sure that the Waterbury Alliance is following the rules. Now, the Deloitte was critical of Waterbury Alliance's approach. But we heard Minister of Finance recently say that the government of Bermuda does not have to apply these tests. The government of Bermuda has followed financial destruction, which took the Minister of Finance only 24 hours to bypass the technical process for a project this long. But that's the rigorousest financial test inside of our financial destruction. And the Minister of Finance says that he does not have to follow these requirements. Now, there were five cases that were outlined in the full business case. And those are the strategic case, the economic case, the commercial case, the financial case, and the management case. And I'll attempt to highlight them very quickly. There's a lot of items I'm going to attempt not to read all as these things will be put up on the bird and on the happy, that we put up on the P L B website as well. Those persons want to take them and read them and adapt. But I don't want to bore you with much, I would at least allow a little bit of time for questions asked. However, the first case was the strategic case. And on this, the government got a good score. The Deloitte said that the strategic case is well-defined. And while there are some areas that could be refined to align to REMO methodology, the case is comprehensive and principled. And the strategic case has been developed over a number of years and is the best out of the five cases. So I've qualified the government as not to say, because we have all activated and we all know that there will come points in time that we are going to have to replace our airport's article, upgrade our airport's article, and bring our airport's article up to a higher standard. That much is understood. The question that we all have to ask is when and how and whether or not we should apply that. But what I think is very interesting, when we talk about this report and one of the things that we'll find about the report, in the last sentence says, however, it should be noted that significant part of the most recent evidence-based change had been produced subsequent or in parallel to the agreement with ACON. Recognizing this, the government, they want to be clear that it owes its own strategy to the airport and the ongoing dialogue of possession strategy, which is distinct from any perspective of possession. What that's saying is that ACON is doing the work that the government is supposed to do. Before the government goes to a supplier, which they already chose this by ACON, they are supposed to have these states running in advance. And that's not what is being done. And that is a problem, that is very definition of a very clear conflict of interest. If the company that stands to gain the concession is doing the work for the government and saying what they will benefit from. So we see this repeated a few times. We'll move on to the economic case. Now, the economic case is where you analyze what is the best value of money, what is the best approach, what is the best use of taxpayers' money. And the Deloitte report was very critical of Waterbury Alliance's approach to the airport development and highlighted key and integral steps that were missing from the economic case. Not that were done half-heartedly, that were missing entirely. One of the things that's key, and I think I want to emphasize this, it says that key and crucial steps are not present in the case. And this includes an economic assessment of defined list of options. And I want to stop it because I think that's important. Because in order to make sure that we're getting the best deal, we should at least examine all the various options. That means the public option, a private option, an option where we raise the money ourselves, a PPP option, to look at the various options to figure out which one will work best for the government of Bermuda. That is something that was not done and is a key and integral step. It goes on to say that, I'm sorry, these include an economic assessment of the fine list of options to identify what economically advantageous solutions were needed and some specific REMO and why are best practices considered, such as the use of a public sector comparator and optimism bias assessment. What that means is that you should compare it to if the government itself was backing that, was that saving the government money. This has not been done. Also, when it speaks about optional values, there is always a chance where when you're going with one supplier, the one supplier will say, oh, this will work, and you do not test it against something else. And of course, that is very, very dangerous. It goes on to say, and I think this is key, under REMO guidance, this analysis is expected to be performed by government prior to engaging with any potential suppliers, such as the most advantageous solution for the government is identified free from private sector influence. This was not done. So that means that all of what we hear about how this is the best plan and this is the best way to go forward, guess what? We never tried anything else. We didn't look at anything else, we didn't even examine anything else, we didn't analyze anything else. So we don't know. And when Larry Burson tells me that $620 billion we made by ACON, we have the question, why is this the case? Wait a second. The next item, of course, the next third case, which is the third of the five cases, is the commercial case. Now, this case basically talks like along the lines of procurement. I am making sure that we get the pure right. We saw that commercial case, it said, and this is what our comments. The Deloitte report examined the commercial case and poured cold water on the OPE's claim that their corporate approach can guarantee value for money. And some of the things that the report said on this as well. We identified key gaps in evidence that the sole source procurement approach that was selected will offer the best value for money. And the government approach, they delivered value for money through commercial negotiations. So for the key hallmarks of public sector spending, ensuring that we get value for money, the approach the government has taken, the Deloitte said, we cannot make sure of value for money. It goes on to say that it should be noted that the conclusion in favor of a sole source procurement, noted the signing lack of events and investor interest, is made by CCC. And government, they want to perform an independent analysis of pure strategy to satisfy itself on the basis of that analysis. So, when we have heard the government say that there's no one else who will take this on, that's CCC and ACON tell the government. And they'll turn on the phone and tell the people who knew that. They haven't tested, they haven't tried, they haven't gone to anyone else, they haven't seen if we can get a better deal. Yet we are ready to sign over our airport for 35 years without testing anyone else. And this last one is very interesting because when I read it, because we heard the government say that, of course, for sole source ways, we don't need to go. However, it seems that there is some stuff in government that says otherwise. Because it says the available evidence is in large part from earlier stages in project development. There is a potential gap in the evidence to support the sole source procurement action offered from, from June 2014, that was when the minister decided to go to CCC. As compared to previous evidence suggested that it competed and these put downs tender, PPP procurement process could be viable. So there is reports inside the government which says that a PPP process could be viable, a competitive process. Yet the current government tells us, no. That's what we're seeing inside of this report. Yet, the Minister of Finance went to Canada on Tuesday, and they may have approved this budget to move forward. Despite all of these problems. We'll move on to the financial case. The Deloitte also examined the financial case and found that many items were again developed by CCC. And they did not take into account the full cost which we all bore by the government of Bermuda, which is all of us in past days. One of the things that was said is, while there's been a great deal of work on the affordability of the project, it has been developed by CCC as opposed to government. Imagine that. And CCC's affordability performance fails to encapsulate all costs borne by the government during and after the project. So here we are, saying that this is not worth the cost of energy, yet that is being told to us by CCC and could end up costing us additional money. And this is the final line, which says, a complete financial case could allow the government to assess whether the government can afford their obligations under the proposed concession arrangement and to what extent it will achieve the government's stated objective for the project, including a minimal impact on the government's attitude. So, as I said, we are moving forward with this project. And a complete financial case is not being developed, a complete commercial case is not being developed, and the economic options have not been examined at all. That is a trap. The final case was the management case. And I'm not going to spend too much time on this because management case was admitted by the Deloitte as something that would not have been developed given the stage of the project. And it said, recognizing the current stage of development of the project, this is the least much short of the five cases indicating that the overall business case is yet, is not yet advanced enough for implementation and delivery considerations to be detailed. It did, however, and this is the last point, it said, one point in the management case which can add significant value for your development at present is a contingency plan, should the proposal be able to be offered by ACON. So, you don't have a contingency plan either? So all of our actions are just one aspect to CCC. So that's the highlight of a 200-page report. Now, as Colonel said, we have a promise that December, which is only five pages, we can take a look at the type of stuff that is presented inside this report. But overall, the government is moving forward and has not made a strong business case. We are looking to, as I said, give away a precedent that over the next 35 years, they exceed $2 billion, that's what I mean, billion dollars. And we have not done all of our homework in the next, that should not be accepted. So, my last line, and it concludes before I turn over to the Shadow Minister of Finance, is the Waterbury Alliance, as it says right now, is getting water into a mad deal. There's no question about it. We are unsure if there's value for money, which means that we don't even know if we're getting the best deal. We find out that all of these numbers that are going on is not taking into account the full cost to the government of Bermuda. Which is key, there is no consideration of alternative funding or operating options. So we just don't have a good plan, but we haven't examined any of the other options and we just said that this is the best one. The assumptions, as it said, inside of the report have been made by ACON. So ACON have been unobliged since last June during the government's quarter. And instead of the government doing this independently, it is being done by the company that is standing to be able to contract. Today, we know that millions of dollars have been spent on resources. And what is most key is that Minister Richards has pushed back against developing the full business case, saying that Bermuda does not have to follow her managed strategy REMO. In other words, saying that Bermuda does not have to follow the best practice in what will be the largest capital project in our country's history. Well, the only thing that I can say is, when we're talking about 35 years and $2 billion revenue, nothing short of best practice would be accepted. And the P L B will continue to make sure that the people discussing are educated on the bad deal that the Waterbury Alliance is about to sign and commit us all to. Thank you for your attention.
Great, you're very wonderful. The one part of this presentation is to sort of give you the, as my honorable colleague has given us, the financial implications and the financial consequences of moving forward with this deal. I want to give you somewhat of overview of the practice, what it looks like, what it turns into, how it affects our aviation industry. But just to start with a few things, the P L B believes that we should not prioritize our great international airport. We also believe that the problems generated by the airport should belong to the people of Bermuda and not the company. We believe that we can build a good airport and maintain control of our airport. That we must not forget about the causeway. That a product of this size must go out to tender. That we must get the best deal that takes two copies airport, the causeway. And if that takes extra time, it is better to get the medley over 35 years. We must consider a long-term view and not just the short-term input that can result in long-term consequences for our children. Given the current financial constraints of the government, we must focus on increasing air arrival by violating our transport order before committing limited revenue to a new airport. Now, on behalf of our vision, I just want to take you back to someone's thought or something back to give you a brief 30-second overview of how we are to develop our airport. Back in 1936, the Back in 1936, discussions and meetings were going on about where we were going to fund the airport to help support the World War II assets. In 1941 to 1943, the airport was built in its current location. It then was built by the current location by the Army for engineers. Let's skip a few, skip a few years. The original airport still had its three runwayes. We have now got to one of the original oneways, which is just a gateway runway one, two, and runway three zero. In 1975, it was transferred from the United States Army to the United States Navy and called King Field Airport Annex or King Field Airport Base, which many of you may have remembered. That's a little bit of a different white tongue, but... But I don't think we can remember, I remember Prince McDonald as far as much as I know about that one. But, they signed in 1975, it's on a 99-year lease, to with the United States Navy. In 1995, that lease is terminated and the airport was then handed over to the government. Now, one point I know of is that military aviation differs from commercial aviation. Military aviation, contrary to popular belief, does not have the same or does not have as stringent rules, regulations, and policies as commercial aviation does. So in 1995, the government, the government of the airport, so over the airport, they were already behind AICOM. There was murder events that needed to be put off, there was airport vehicle body language need to be put in place, fire suppression that needed to be put in place, just a lot of dissection services, and veterans and veterans that need to be put in place. So we were already behind AICOM. So, let's get to how most of those buildings and most of the infrastructure has not changed since the 1904s. We've added more to it, but we haven't changed it since. So, it is past two-slope, by maybe a few candidates. So, the D-Port airport, there is a strong army corps. But the thing is, how do you go about doing it in sustainable manner? And that is where the... When I wrote that, in November 2013, the SAE report came out. And when you wrote the SAE report, they said, "In order of, in order of order, these are the departments, these are the areas of, that we feel should be part of ours." And the first area, the first department was Department of Air Operations, followed by Department of Civil Aviation. Now, with my knowledge of aviation, with my background in aviation, what I realized is that we can do, we can get to the same goal, but by saving a different lot. If we were to, and it is not a narrow, this was done and perpetrated in several jurisdictions around the world, if we were to create a airport for it. Now, a airport for it would mean that the Department of Airport Operations, as of right now, would then become a kindle. Somewhat similar to with code, similar to civil aviation, which is already a kindle. They would then become separate from the financially, operationally, they would become separate from the computer company. That means the overhead that is needed to run the Department of Operations would actually come from the cost. The tax base, all the senior and headquarter have to foot the bill for what it costs to own the airport. Now, just to go a little bit further, is that our, as I said, our vision is a greater kindle. Now, with the kindle, the kindle can play several roles. Kindle is the foundation of an infrastructure that can be expanded. And I'm going to give you more detail over there. But it can be expanded to absorb and take on other responsibilities, depending on the need of the country and the need of government. So, what I can say, mainly I want to focus on is that self-sustainability. A airport for it would then, the question might be asked, how can a airport for it sustain itself if right now it's taking part in the government? Now, there is international standards, international priorities, international policy and legislation that says that a airport's revenues for revenues generated from the airport must by international law go back into the airport itself. So therefore, that means all the parche taxes that we pay, that now raises a consolidated form, by the letter of the law, that is not the right way to do it. Yes, I want to sound like I was following, I asked the Minister of Transport, was he aware of this, he said yes. And then asking what was the amount of money about it, we knew that we were secretly involved in this, and this, and this, etc. We've been doing it for so long that we may as well continue to do it. Now, that told me that. And what I did appreciate is the fact that we have, as my colleague, he outlined exactly how much money is being generated by revenue from the parche tax. That parche tax is not going to the Department of Airport Operations, that is the consolidated form that comes on the tax commission forms. So, it's in it, and then the report, and shows that the airport operations is losing money, or the airport is losing money, that is inaccurate. It's inaccurate, because finances are not being properly allocated. So, now, what happens is that when the airport is not, when finance is not being properly allocated, it looks like it's losing money. If and then we were to work to afford investors, they're going to say, we need to find ways to make this project look more attractive. We need to find ways to make this, to make this project more sustainable. Now, with the money not being allocated, what has the government done? The government in April of this year went and raised the parche tax. And then just a few years ago, the Department of Finance, the Department of Riches, went and increased, what I would consider, the parche tax again. Now, it wasn't exactly the parche tax, the idea of this was for aviation security. The justification is that we took delivery of 700 magnetomers. Magnetomers are those very types that you walk through and go through security, we took delivery of them, we used our paper. Now, that figure is going from $4 to $8. And then on top of, and this is per person, and then on top of that, you have the increase, we increased for including a $16 airport development cost, for airport development. Now, this is going on your airplane. So therefore, everybody that buys a plane, everybody that goes to that airport, this money is being generated per person, millions of dollars. That does not go to airport operations, but goes back into the consolidated form. So, what has happened is that I'll use the, I'll use the Bahamas model. Bahamas has just, in the past 20 years, built a new airport. What they did first is, surprisingly, they created an airport authority. That airport authority, then put the, put an RPO for the building and operation of their airport. So therefore, they ran, and it actually goes within a requirement. Now, the difference between the beginning model and the medium model is that that beginning model is a subcontract. That beginning model is the equipment of a contractor coming to your home and building your, bringing your home. The contractor does not own your home. The contractor does not tell you what they're going to pay, or what you're going to pay for mortgage. The contractor does not dictate the hours of operation, nor does it want the operation in your home. The contractor answers to you. So with the beginning model, you have an airport authority that was put in place first. That, they then, in a kindle, they are able to make real-time decisions, sign contracts on behalf of the government. But remember, the beginning people's not paperless because they're self-sufficient. Because any revenue that is generated by this airport authority goes right back into the airport from overhead, daily operation, and for rebuilding or upgrades. So, where that's at, the OPA's plan see the airport as similar to nuclear aircraft. And the OPA will enter into a concessionary agreement with the company that the company CCC chooses, with my colleague, Shilis, that I've already consulted with mentions. We will no longer have our rightful control over this country's most preferred asset for possibly carrying certain materials of various. This time, it offers you control out of our current term and channel to a new company. The company contracted to the one the minister has said has already been selected, and they are now allowing the airport to do the mission and once again, to work the airport. I am pleased to see them with their heart as I say, big on the back. So, now, the thing is that, when this, the minister has said that there is no certainty of the 43 jobs that are a rate of remaining jobs that are at the airport, in the Department of Airport Operations, he cannot guarantee those jobs. Now, the thing is that if you look at the two different visions, as I said, I got on aviation, this is what I go to my colleagues, and I call this someone that is in it, and I made it part of this platform. Because the thing is, the airport authority, we can guarantee to the jobs. Because if you go into the airport authority, the people that are associated in that airport, that are working for the Department of Airport Operations, are the subject matter actors. They can run the airport for, give you some history, I've been working at the airport since 1997. One of my professional mentors in the Department of Airport Operations was Thomas Nelson, who is now the Director of Civil Aviation. And civil aviation is the regulatory body of procurement's aviation and directors of the Department of Airport Operations. So we have remedies that are making the decisions that are at the top of the rank. We don't need to change anything. We might learn a few more remedies, but that cannot be guaranteed. The only thing that can be guaranteed is that we will not need to, any of those systems, we will not need to fire anybody. The remedies that are there now are going to lead to the jobs. So, I think I'll outline the difference between the vision of PLP for the future and the vision of PLPA. But just to put it out there, just to, to put it out there by the time, PLP vision promotes a competitive and further than that bidding process. Provides negotiating power for future plausible construction and/or additional airport tunnel upgrades. And that is done by us keeping control of our airport through the airport authority. Use the creation of the airport authority to be able to allow remedies to take advantage of pushing rejected revenues generated by airport. And I just want to stop right there. And it's not a slide, but when you talk about future projected revenue, what's going on right now, that is a big and a lot of different one, is our airport space program. Or, not really airspace program. The airspace right now, you know, goes out to, theoretically, has a jurisdiction of 50 miles. We, our jet control is here, control 5 miles, but it goes out to 50 miles. Any airport employee through that space, they're routine, right over 50 miles or so, has to pay a fee. So imagine, you have a yard, this is one house on a 400 acre of land. And every time somebody is close to, is close to main road, and it makes it easy to go through, every time somebody comes through your yard, you don't have a problem with it, they pay you, they pay you $10. Anytime somebody, anybody who owns a 400 acre of your yard, you get $10, $40, even on a grand purchase. So imagine, what is, and what's in the pipeline now, is that we are looking at expanding, and the ministry is talking about it in the market, we're looking at expanding our airspace from 50 miles to 250 miles. So now, those who are walking around here a 400 acre, they're not going to walk around a acre because they're going to have to take themselves out of the way. What they get on with, you get a bigger net and catch more fish. So now, that will generate significant revenue, revenue that will not on the OPA's plan, will not go to, will go back to the maintenance. But notice how the significant revenue streams, significant revenue projects are silent. You don't even know what's going on about that, but I digress. This, our OPA's plan allows the people to maintain operational control of our new airport for the foreseeable future. Increase the revenue at the revenue of the airport by increasing tourism before the airport. And that is important, because remember, in the OPA's current plan, it's still being paid for, as my colleagues were describing to talk about, that shortfall is by additional taxes. And it's taxing on everybody that uses the airport, in the airline ticket. So therefore, if we do not have significant tourists allowed, if our tourism product continues to require it, we start to lose money. And if we start to lose money, we cannot generate enough profit to then pay back CCC. CCC then can now pay back the airport, their purchases, and now it becomes an international business situation. So what we are looking at is quality over quantity development. What we are seeing, let's focus on those products first. Let's increase the air value, because if we increase air value, we increase revenue. To increase revenue, we increase by getting sustainability of your airport. God bless work to the OPA's plan. Your OPA's plans let AICOM, your sole source, questionable, untended bidding process. I think that's what you're saying. It prioritizes our airport, one of the reasons for this lucrative assets for 35 years. If you do put back the early politician that has the ability of being in the hospital center and maintaining ownership of our airport again, it's sitting in front of the record, as I saw and then you're right. So, this does also, this does not allow for the building of a new post. If you build an airport, and you say that you're going to increase visitor volume, then you need to increase transportation and traffic congestion. If you increase traffic congestion, you need to build more, you need to build a more modernized version of what we have now, something that can handle more traffic. That's what they did in Bahamas, when they built the airport, it was part of tourism, basically a total robust tourism program. They need to build an airport in London, they built through highways, highways, they built through tourism attractions, they upgraded all tourism attractions, they made it, they made it a robust program. And this plan by OPA, seizure of two, they will be, will be, of future government programs will to be incoming, allowing open or transparent bidding process. And pressing ahead despite poor visitor numbers and poor government finances. Now, in conclusion, I mean, what I want to do is, I'm just going to go a little bit of a script before I get to a great conclusion, is that I want to, I hear the question that everyone is talking about, what can we do, what can I do as an act of me, what can I do to stop this project if I'm not favorable? I want to take the time out to acknowledge my colleagues in the audience, sitting in center of the question. And the reason that I want to acknowledge my colleagues is because back in his day, when he was an MP, when he was in Congress, when PLP was doubled, they have forced us to create the Office of the Importance. Now, the thing is that the Office of the Importance is checking bias for the average union process of the government of the day. The Office of the Importance, if you have an issue with the way that they're doing investments in the government, the Office of the Importance is an avenue in which to do it. If you can provide credible evidence, credible data to the Office of the Importance, my understanding is that it is our constitutional right, our constitutional duty to investigate. Now, I think here, my old advisor, Josh, has proven that there's 2,000 pages, 2,000 pages of data information, there's 200 pages right here in front of us, that for all raises concerns, that give us reason to take this to the Office of the Importance and let them know that this is what we have an issue with. I know that there are some unions, some in the way that are already open. And maybe we should reach out to the Office of the Importance and see what has come of it. Because it'd be very interesting to see what investigation comes from others. Once again, it's a, the Lloyd independent person, independent entity, has gone, where I'm going to go, huge contradictions, and we're for sure, in the time the UPA is doing right now. For the UPA, they put the brand, brand foundation agenda on hold, and now they're managing the brand foundation of the way for various assets for these 35 years. Now, I also want to go to the script again once more. Because remember I said that the airport authority, that go to the executive meeting, you're looking at the surplus, the revenue that the airport is generating. We're looking at the surplus, the revenue that the airport is generating, my other friends, Shadow Minister has outlined that they're to do it now. Also putting the airport there, the airspace program to increase significant revenues. Now, I say that they go on the line, there's another part that might not be performing as the, instead of prioritizing that part. You could put it under the, the offices of the airport authority, you could say that same airport. And it comes to the airport authority. So therefore, once again, not prioritizing, you're still getting the same result, changing the, opening it, taking the operation cost off of the government box. But yet they still ask for it, they still ask for the taxpayer, even the taxpayer is not physically paying for it. So this is something that's the same. And then you change that, that, uh, they now it becomes a board authority. Just like the first one, JFK board authority, or LOML, or, or authority, by Apple authority, Apple authority. This is what board authority is, this is what governments around the world have done. So why are we not doing that? It's hard and true. It is time tested, but also we are the conclusion. OPA refuses to examine other options, which I would present to right now, for the financing of our airport. And we're not having a competitive tender process to short treaty against the best deal. You can openly short treaty that they most prioritize practices, but OPA is playing in government house. And they want to start to sole source CCC and ignore good government's progress in the tender process. We cannot allow our airports to be privatized. I'll, I'll say, we cannot allow our airport to be privatized. I don't think you all agree with me. We cannot allow our airport to be privatized. And furthermore, we cannot allow the OPA to go through with this deal without an open, competitive and transparent tendering process. And here that I'd like to thank you for your time.
Okay, I would like to thank the Shadow Ministers for quite a comprehensive presentation on non-justing, um, direct report. But also on, um, other options that are available to people of the United States of California and Italy. I'm going to start with by putting some questions to them, like, why are we doing, why I think we somewhat answered this one in the sense that, um, and I'd like to be a bit exonerated in the sense that it was a question of, do I have a question for my, my, why don't you even hear chairman? And I think that Shadow Transport Minister talked about, not now, because it's a question of priorities. If you don't have no business, well, your business has been in the wrong direction. Why would you want to build a new terminal, you know, except that they're common? I don't think so. I think that probably is rude to travel. Do you have any practical action or any experience in any airport, anywhere in the world, other than how long you have to stand in line for a promotion in customs? Will you? And I know that if you all choose to visit any place, people say, oh, Nazi, Nazi airport. You want to get to the beaches, or the, or the Antwerp? And so, you know, the real question that I have is that, you know, and you, neither one of you Shadowers has a top story. Two hundred million dollars is a lot of money. And I am, and I personally am having difficulties processing why you would need to spend that amount of money to go to the terminal? If people have been asked to, to go to OPA? And it's not going to, and I leave a fact when we turn it to the table, or not to be too lenient, if we have a Nazi, Nazi airport? So could you address that?
Well, that's a very good question. Now, I'm going to be honest. I, part of me is in favor of a new airport, but that's a selfish part of me, because I'm not for jet nervous airport and I can get involved with. I think very, very nice, but in all seriousness, what is happening now is that our airport is at that base. And I'll, I'll use a situation that I just mentioned. I just had to buy a car. Not necessarily because I wanted to, but because my, my car, that I had, the jet nervous, it caused more to occupy it than it was worth. Now, that is really where the airport is, and I'm just being clear. Every time it rains, it makes up its strength. Because it's the game on top, the world is the game it's in. But the thing is, and what does that do? That causes fireworks to roll. So now, like, if I get an airport in the rain, you got, the tourists doesn't look good impression. Now, was that a constitutional airport? I don't know. If you talk to those members of customs immigration team that will find you, I think very much to show you that they will take you to the airport. Because of the divisions that they are working. They are trying to do this. Working at the airport is trying, is that all are dead. Whenever you, when you're driving down the road, you hear a noise, that's what's going on now. For you to smell smoke, you're all going to be in your car, not the bus, funny. So the thing is that in the end, um, somehow, we now, uh, the way our schedule is, we are, as airlines, are fighting the unions. We're fighting for operational resources. Uh, jet regulators, if you look at a lot of the exit surveys, tourists are not new present. Now, please, the airport, that is the last impression that you have on you. I've seen surveys that say, I had a wonderful time up until I got to the airport. But I'm just saying, of course, I'm just giving you the facts and you can pay the personal cost. Is that part two hundred million dollars? Is that part, okay, well, they are here for thirty five years. Does my goal is a lot? Uh, as, as that's right now, it doesn't. There are other things that we can do, like focus on our tourism products. If people seen, if people seen double this, even a quarter, if we saw, if we saw an increase at all in our tourism numbers. Maybe I might be inclined to say, you know what, let's push the priority of the airport up. But the priority for the airport should only go up as our tourism products.
And the Shadow Minister, uh, is actually right, but I want to remind everyone of progressive labor party policies. And progressive labor party believes that it's set, it's set up, developing this eleven million dollars to the, um, to the Canadian company, AIC. Put it aside, we should invest that money in developing our tourism product and increasing our air arrival numbers. If our air arrival numbers were to increase back up to three hundred or above three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand a year, then we'll have plenty of money through passenger taxes to pay for an airport ourselves, if you know the question. So I think that's the better way to look at it. And increased air arrival numbers benefit us all. No, as Tim said, it's going to help you because we have a new airport.
Okay, we'll now open the door to questions. I would ask, I do know we have a, Shadow Dior can put in the room tonight. Some of them, and many of them, I suspect, um, are coming in to get answers to their questions. So while we're speaking, we would encourage those who have questions, we'll either Shadow Minister to ask them. We're expecting with my performance, you actually have to come to the front of the, the talk clock. We see him on, for the problems.
Yes, again, we, we know, one of, a couple of questions, first of all, I just want to talk about giving away. Giving away our post office, we're giving away our children's scholarships, we're giving away, we're giving away seventy seven million to the American stock. We're giving away our homes, our property. We, we get me trying for the tourism department to the BTA, and I'm giving away our tax, tax pay of money to businesses. We're giving away our bar party. How much more are we going to give away? This is one question that, I actually have a few questions. The interest, if CCC take one of these deals, obviously they don't have a bank, but they don't have to borrow money from some other, another bank or who not? So there will be some interest in full interest that you may not have a seat. Interest rates could be as high as ten percent, but probably no more than six percent. A couple years ago, finance minister Walter just came to us, or, sorry, said to you, that they, he needed to borrow approximately eight hundred million dollars to help AIC. He, he remember what he said, then he rested his money and he was borrowing about two hundred, if you correct me on that, then he had to find his money, look. And when he done, he raised his money within the OPA. One of my questions is why can't he be saved? And hence, with the interest that they saved, you could assist our loan. And I know one deal, he is, he kept it over about no more than ten thousand dollars. I would like to see us as a people to generate funds, to build, if we, if we do need the service, to generate funds within our own society to build this service and whatever interest that is happening in people's pockets. My second question is, in reference to the, the question of MBE, you touched on this earlier. The energy plant, or what we do is that it will be given away in reference to this new energy plant. Where I, I assume was why they want to move the airport from point A to point B, so they can build this energy plant. Who, who, who's going to back up for them on that? And how much kickbacks are really out there? Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. Let me stand up, stretch my legs a little bit. Uh, thank you very much, uh, for your question. Uh, first, before I get to answer your question, I just want to make sure that I got it prior by the way. The eight hundred million, seven hundred fifty million of those raised overseas and fifty million of those raised here. So not before eight hundred million was raised, so I just want to make sure I clarify that. And the second thing is that I'm not sure at what rate, uh, AIC will be able to borrow money at. I know the government rule is currently borrowing money at five percent. And there is something that speaks in the law of the court about the interest rate differential. Because typically governments can borrow money for less than the private sector can borrow money. Now, we don't believe that this is actually going to be guaranteed by Canada, because Canada can borrow at very, very low interest rates. So there's still a question as to what interest rate do we want that? But that's your overall premise and understanding is the fact is that regardless of the interest rate, six hundred and twenty million dollars in profits, that's underwriting. It is a number rate and has been said on countless occasions, on countless occasions, that AIC will not become these people to take over our airport if they were not going to make any more profit. They are a publicly traded company on the Toronto Stock Exchange, one of the largest construction companies in the world. And their job is to return money to their shareholders. That is the very basic and essence of private business and capitalism. So when we understand that we're giving our airport to AIC, we know that they're going to pay money. And surely, it would make more sense for us to make the six hundred and twenty million dollars ourselves. So we can fund it ourselves. The question is whether or not we want to. And there's lots of ways to fund it. We can fund it in the exact same way that AIC is going to do it, which is going to borrow money. We can fund it by increasing taxes, which was the government has already done. We can fund it by having, as you call it, a special purpose vehicle, which is what the government is also pretending by doing. Which is where they basically say, this is the airport, this airport is going to return this amount of money over a certain amount of years. If you want to buy and invest in this airport, you can go ahead and do that. So that is all the stuff that is being done. The question and the basic premise is, why is the first thought that the government aligns has? Is to privatize the airport without any consideration, any other option. It is not the way to go and it is certainly wrong. And one of the arguments which we had is that we can't do it ourselves because we had a very poor record in building things, delivering things on site. I will agree with the Minister on this, that we had a very poor record of building things on site. But I will also say, the Minister finds, that not every government project runs over budget, not everywhere. Because you can manage a government project properly and professionally. So to say that, I want to read something from Lloyd, because it basically provides one of that same line from the Minister's findings. And it says, and I quote, "It should also be noted that previous procurement failures in themselves may not be evidence of a failure of a competed process to secure value through competition. As such failures could have been due to ineffective allocation of construction risk." Basically what that's saying is, for models who said, oh, we had RFP for all these budgets that don't over budget? That's not what causes it to go over budget. And RFP doesn't cause to go over budget. You have to be able to manage construction and the main thing, manage risk. Do you know what happens when we all capitalize over a billion and go overseas, you know what they call this country? We call it the risk capital of the world. If we have all these companies, now, now Pittsburgh Road, that manage billions and billions and billions of dollars of risk today. You need to tell me that we can't manage an instructional risk for a two hundred million dollar airport over the African. Onto your second question regarding the sole metals. Our understanding is that money is going to improve to the airport to pay for, um, this entire park. So that is even more relevant to you now. That's our understanding now. We do not have any particular details, so I'm saying that is our understanding. But it remains to be seen as to how that money will go or where that money will go.
How do you have a bunch, okay, the rest of the house, everybody here? Now, I think it's not that, um, what I am concerned about, how much it costs to build an airport, they have a million dollars. How much is this cost to go over there? It's bigger than a airport. Two hundred million, three hundred million. You build a, a airport, a food hotel, in fact, it's a building airport. But my thing is this. I was talking to some people, who I stayed, which is a dog frame. And I was concerned about airplanes, when they leave, taxi down, and they stop and ramping up to the building right here. It's three floors, which is thirty nine floors in the Pallo, thirty nine second, thirty nine in the crush floor. A turtle of, uh, who is it? How much is that? Okay, so one part, one part I have a queen, it's like two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty people, right? Now, these airplanes, they taxi down, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's three people. And they battle their, uh, fears, the way they're built, most of the time in south, the feeling goes out of the southeast, south or southwest. Their fears on the bracket they're built, and in their building, urban out, in their building, there are two thousand people. One of them is a lady, a sixty four, one of them is a woman. They have the crates, the mass one, and they have, I don't know, oxygen, oxygen, something like that. So, one, one woman, yeah, one, they're jumping in the pit. She gave off smoke, right? She gave off smoke. And she seemed to be, and God, he also asked me, I'm just getting prepared for, because he had probably a whip. And I know that it is a privilege. And I know that it is a privilege to, the airplanes sit there, handling their fuses, and they're building right there. So I called, uh, one bar. And he says, okay, well, I know some people over there at the airport. Ask if I could talk to him, he gave the airplanes to stop for around a long way. Past Pizza House. Now, I guess, let's not be known, or maybe not know, that the airplanes, the pilot ones, used to be parked or with both weights, now by the post office. They moved them from there to just off to Pizza House, right? And I said, okay, Pizza House has a problem now because the guests are sitting outside there, down at that field. But they hired some guys, they put them in pieces and defense to sort of break off the fuses, but they not doing it for Christ's sake. So one bar coming back, two years later. Hey, 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 wait, wait, this is real important. Two years later, the board bar called me back and says, it's not the thing you do. So I called the premier. I said, I'm going to do this out. The premier, guess what he tells me? He says, oh, you can't do the building, you can't do it the long way. So I said, are you playing me for stupid? I know that. What you can't change is whether the plane stops before it takes off to scroll around the world, for a thousand, thousand area here. So why don't you do that? Oh, not like I do. That's the O D A. So do you believe that individuals want to live in that building? Like I just told you, it's too many, they have oxygen tanks. And the other one, he was, not to get down, but the air fuses, since on all that problem. But I didn't want to talk about my thoughts about our lives. Right state. And this one has been out for nine years, I've been doing that for a year, and I can't no mind of that. So if I've been doing that for just a year, why am I taking a beat on my career? Because that's this problem. So I, I'm hoping that somebody in the P L K can do something about that problem. Thank you very much.
Uh, good evening. I just have a really quick question. Um, which is, you put, uh, Aegon, are they actually using the building? Or is it the current type of language included in the law? And everything else along with it? That's my question. Are they getting the building or are they getting the current type of rules?
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, just to address the German orange. Uh, one thing is that there's, to be honest, I'm not going to show them anything quick. Uh, as a part of myself, what you're talking about is what's called the old short line. The old short line is where all planes go to be able to clear the table. Uh, so what would actually have to happen? In order to change that, what would you change to that the configuration of the taxiway? And if you change the configuration of the taxiway, then that implications all get out because then we'll, we'll give it out like, then once you have a happy, then you have what's called intersection takeoffs. Which is not using the whole one way to the table. And as a part of the teaching in our flight school is, you're, you're proud. Our superpower and one of the technology are no help in the process. So unfortunately, it doesn't seem as though there's anything that, that's very immediate, uh, solution. But what I can do and what I will do is I will phone the aircraft controllers, see if they are aware, to see if anything that they, um, will do that. So if you get the aircraft operators to start, uh, doing what's called a rolling one on. But there is no answer, I just want to hear. But if you're, if you're up, this question. CCC gets the whole much lot, right? Uh, and when, but everything except for the voice, the pizza legislation that came across, came to find that not so only really separated what's called the finger from the airport lands. What they did from the finger from the airport lands. And fingers were there to put the, the, uh, flesh, like just the, uh, I'll say, flesh upon. Uh, also, there was another gentleman that was here that asked, oh, why are they building the airport among, uh, in the future, but not where they are now? It's supposed to be able to sort of accommodate that we do not have a fortunate airports. So we can build it in such a manner so that the current airport can be used while the other airport is being built. So that's, it's not good for the coordination of location and operational efficiencies.
I contend that we are all of the same mind and judgment, all of the same case in the truth. The people that need to be in this room are not in this room. That's the O D A, right? They have put us on mute. So what I'd like to leave here to my people, I'd like to leave with an understanding of what we, the people, must know. You mentioned the ambassador. Is there something in law where it says the ambassador cannot take the ministers to task in a government role? Is there something in the law that that affects? Because I know they didn't, didn't keep them rights and they said that they were, they only have the legislative power to, uh, oversee or intervene in this matter. They only deal with matters of like discriminatory issues and, you know, racism and stuff like that. Because I meant as, uh, a resident of the time, uh, the thing that I recall is that I am being amused. I am being amused. And I think I speak for the majority of us. We are people that have been, uh, believing the O D A is abusing its authority ever since they left the box. Right? And they maintain that position. And I would like to know, please, what can we do in terms of approaching the ambassador? This is where, you know, just keep it simple. Before you leave tonight, my daughter told me to stay away from the House of Assembly. And I'm feeling, I'm feeling, I'm feeling this monkey is, uh, here right from the House of Assembly. You see me there? And the last one, when you were playing the saxophone speaker, right? I've heard about what, four, nine thirty, forty one, so all of that, everything else looks like three o'clock time, I left the villa, all morning, midnight. My daughter turned to her face and says, babe, because I know who you are. And they even told me to someone to talk better. Now, brothers, please give us a simple answer. Can we proceed? Can we pursue the, um, ambassador concerning this matter? Um, lovely, do you have a petition here? Would the petition also help us too? If you get your advocacy ambassador, would that be a help? Thank you.
Thank you very much, everything. The first thing I'd like to say is that, as that big boy out there is a petition that says that we do not support, uh, the airport project, uh, the revitalization of our airport. So please feel free to add your name to that, um, when you leave. Because of course, people power is the only thing that politicians want. Now, you said that, uh, that you would experience a great sense of unease. I understand because I feel it too. I just had my first child. My first child is eight months old. If they only get their raise, she will not know that her country owns the airport until she's old as I am now. So I understand. I understand that is when I go to the parliament and listen to the laughter from one in real life who are talking about serious issue about our children not being able to, you know, after school or at risk kids losing their parents. Talking about things where they're willing to give six hundred and twenty million dollars away to the Indian government. So I understand that is, from our perspective, as politicians and as politicians, what we have to do is we have to remain inside of a political framework that is powerful as politicians. And we must make sure that we educate the voters of this country. Because the one thing that politicians fear more than anything, believe what I tell you, is losing an election. That's one thing. And they understand, because I know that a majority of the people in this country are against the airport project. And I know that more definitely talk about how much of a bad deal this is for you that more and more people of those is not, is what. Because the fact of the matter is, you know, the Atlantic person, John Power, and everyone else lined up and said they support the P L P petition that this is a bad deal for you. And that's fine, you have to ask the question. And it is provocative, yes, but our party leader has said, if politicians start acting in a way that does not make sense, you have to wonder whether or not there's a screen of action. And that is why when we have a big parliament, when we have a big parliament, we make sure that we said, and this is something that we will continue to fight for, that if ever, and this is what happens in all types of modern contracts, E P Ps, if there's ever found any impound payment now or the future to anyone, the contract is settled anyway. And that is the way that we're going to operate because it has to be. We have to have a sense that what is being done is being right. There is no question that this is a bad deal for you. Regardless of your office, your office, absolutely, thank your husband, thank your government house, do whatever is necessary. Because I happen to believe that if we continue to educate the voters of this country, if Bob Richards really thinks that he is going to get on a microphone and say that he has signed with the airport for thirty-five years and give away six hundred and twenty million dollars to Indian company, I believe you will see the reaction that he has got. That is my view.
You've been secret. How can we learn to pass?
There's a couple of other things that you can do. Because that, there's a couple of other things that people can do as well, you know? Must resist being popular by the way I have learned. And I've been quiet for a long time, but you don't get, I'll take your license. There's a couple of other things to do. One is this is a financial matter. So somebody who you've been learning a lot from for the entire fourteen years in the P L P government, and particularly the last one, was the Order General. Now, I don't believe she is. But you all know who she is. And I suggest you go out, I did it. And said, why don't you look into this matter? Yet there are, there are a number of matters that she should be looking into that history would suggest is of interest for her. The other thing that we must do, and I'm talking long and not so much just about this issue, you need to talk to the people who are related to you, who did not vote, okay? Because they are people, single candidly, who are responsible for what we're going through now. And I can tell you what you can identify in any of them. Shut up, you loud voice right now. Now, in positions you are in, I know all four hundred and seventeen of them, two in numbers. And so when I talk to them now, there is a first conversation we must have. Because we see they're wanting to do something, try to fix something that's went wrong. My spot, do you understand how important it is for participants in the process now? Because they do have a voice. The other thing is that not six hours. I believe when I had a conversation with a friend today that there is an expectation, or there's an argument going on in that room, quite missing exactly, I might guess. Send it outside, please. Had a conversation today that there is an expectation that the new means, the new act and preact, the way they always air. And that is tall and you're not. And they, they solicit it probably because it's not just, you can't do this thing tonight. You must share what you have, learn what you take away from the new. To the people who live under your roof, the people who you interact with. And you must, and gather to all of us, the one thing that politicians don't like is freedom of opinion. Sadly, the numbers, you see it's in large, some of the groups will be screaming everywhere. Good, you don't see them anywhere. But the numbers are incredible. And you don't want the emails, sir. Blow up the system because they believe. Wrong. There are only the members of parliament that they want to disagree with what they say. Good evening. It's only one thing that I know that cats, the man in the house, is wild. When he stand here, talk, 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 scientists being lower behind the floor, they're coming to O D A, it's stand up, so. And if we need to block, you know, burn cop, they're not. Here's the block, first street, they're blocked. He has a truck down the side that has forty three, he's a governor. This doctor, a doctor, which is pretty, in general, I'm for a man down. I'm seeing men quite lifting up persons for the fall. I say, that's all, lose her nerve or license or practice, for money, for our life. They're coming to keep that, they're singing blues. No, that's my brother's street. Honey baby, you just don't do, that's not the problem. The petition, go to work. I'm tired of crying or seeing how I, even if you have the power of you. You have the power of you. There's something more, I can't, not others, to say, hey, you're a nice man. I can't, I do have a question because I pull my land fires. But I can't come back in. But I can't come back with other, other people. We got the men and then the dark and fight for our life. It's talk, 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 talk. It's going to have trouble. And I'm terrified, I've done that three years, and a hundred men will fight for you guys. And what you do, they check down, they say, check, check, check. Fight again. Fight again. But please, please talk somewhere. And you talk about the, we, we don't have, the benefits of the bio. People have the benefits of the bio. If, if the politicians were saying, I would, we get something done. For some part of the time, all the three D S N A D, that's in any game, any girl who doesn't know chess. Stop it. But I see that a leader of the world, head slave of the revolution, except for a nation for, she couldn't do it. Send yourself free time. I mean, that was a perfect place. So be thankful if you all say that, because you don't know what you're doing. Give it to me now that, no, we got nothing, I'm not going to do it. He said that you were like, you're a good guy. Yeah, of course I do, you were real force. You did eat, shut the world, and need to do something that you're putting, you have to do it. You don't give a shit, you all better get ready for you. Just like you're waiting for that or not. And that's why I see a lot of that and don't people could have loved, you owe me to just never go. But just for that one. And there's love. And a company, company, that I didn't have a bright light. Where's, I don't have a bright light. You good guys, so good people, you don't have a bright light. Certainly, there are some guys, you know, come home, they see you, they're, they're hooked. But you're not, I'm like, yeah, I don't care about you, because it is mine. Yeah, I'm a cop, man. Hey, now, and you don't talk about the situation. Yeah, I'm going to try and do something. That's all. The old man was a service owner, and this is service owner's job. Just saying, remember the other few days, we talked, there were a few, oh. And then I'm, I'm a minister, I'm a minister. Only, and before he's in the heap, for all the pieces still got now, I'll solve this case. And it's now on, it's also why this is the chair. And the crowd want to, don't surprise this in town. Give it to me. What do you do? He took the man out, he dropped for us. And he solved the case in the game that's a person there. But the man had to listen. The boy came out, the way from one, I didn't want to lose him, I was telling him to give me. Right? He was not for fire, for me, dad. He said, "I don't see." Three days he earned another one for pumping gas. He got a problem like this truck, with the truck. Don't do it for stealing from the police lines. Get fucked out. Popped out. Everybody on the stuff, they're still. I can say to you one thing. A man that have broken down, come over there and prop his soul. All type of toes in his arm, he was all day. He just now. Oh, yes. Can you see me, you're for me, I serve so many things, people that, but I'm running out of signal. And you give a couple places, I don't praise, I praise for the right of the house. No, you, you train me, they go on a counter. And they have got, got them in a minute. And don't do that, you demonstrate for boys and jackets, cause they don't, they still want to, you understand? So I put riches to them, and they have four boys and jackets, and they're doing it, and they're just, I'll be told now. Cause it's not gave away your rights. We don't have. That, that's here, they are going to be, we don't have to speak to them. Make them come. Make my lord to leave this house, to take it back now. To take it. Just for example, when it happens, that we, when we're all just want to make it up. When it's all, all shit down, for what have they done, they have their own. And as a student, I call the government stupid, to react just like me. Thank you.
Now, I thank you for your passion, and I understand what's going on. Because that's the anger that a lot of us feel. And it's a lot of frustration. But here's the challenge, the challenge is exactly as number seven. What we need to make sure is that we need to relay the facts to all the people who are not here. So they can feel that as well. A position may not really be, that's fine. But the fact matter is that what we need to do is to make sure that people understand what is at stake in this situation. When we are talking about airport being given away for thirty-five years. And a baby company stands to make a six hundred and twenty million dollar profit. If that gets signed, you won't have to get on the shelf where people treat. People will build themselves. That's why it's important to make sure that we educate people in this country. No, they, they, they don't make up a time where things might get to a different place. I understand that. But right now, our responsibility is to make sure that we educate and as politicians, we have to work the political process. And that's the way that we have to do. As citizens, you can make sure you organize, make sure you call your needs, make sure you do whatever's necessary to gain your point of office. Right? That is important. That is the freedom of democracy, freedom of expression in a country we're ruling.
So I can't exactly, that, that's the, that's the passion part. I think that one of the main keys to the PLP's message right now is that we're not providing criticism. We're providing critique. And critique, we definitely criticism and critique is that criticism points out everything that's wrong. A critique provides a positive solution. We do have a solution for moving forward this airport. So the government wants to move forward, they can take our, they can create an airport for it. If the government wants to move forward, they can go take our little airport for it, have production. But, but, but the idea is that we provide a solution. So look what they say, that all the theory is complaining about what the company's doing. And that all the theory is just our protocol, we can talk to O D A saying. Why, what I want to talk to is say, for all we do, is show back that there is no supply. There is no negotiation, and there is no to ask for this money for.
Good evening. We will win times that I stand aside and leave very thankful to young people. Have purpose, I'm different, I'll be eating. I've been watching the situation. I've been studying this airport situation. And I appreciate the good that we have had. That one is government. Government that have neglected. The wrong of this is as good as the wrong. Why is it all sudden? We find out that up against the wall. Because we need an airport. The other one is in disrepute. And being given bad money to fulfill it. It's something wrong. Many large businesses, I've always been told that you run ahead of that from a depreciating form. What happened? To people who was supposed to be running this country. Could they not see that sometime that airport, what a necessity, having to be repaired or in. Hurt this is a pretty great form. So the last earth has been declared over the years. Nobody has a foresight to see the airport going back. We find out that up against the wall now. And we're told that it's necessary, our government that's running the situation now. We need to, it's necessary to go along with the plan. Therefore, we can find ourselves with a deficit goal. And a deficit budget for the next thirty years. And that is being ruled out. Because things we know that we are, it will be another sixty years or more. Before we can really get out of, out of this hole. If we let and we allow the airport to go the way that the O D A wants it. Barack has given us a pretty good plan. Has good plan that the PLP have bring out of this. That's it. And I think they could be fooled if we didn't stop to give some serious thought. Why should we sit back and give away fifty thousand dollars property? I remember Paul. Tell us. That we cannot understand. What word is? We cannot understand. My. Hitler. Hitler. We don't understand. We, we, we're dying all the time. We don't understand anything. When it comes to money, up and down, understanding. The whole we can do is take it one hand and put it on the other. And if you want to understand, and use these words. If you want to understand finance, somebody. I remember he'll say that. I am a financial minister. And if you want to understand something about finance, finance, and I've been listening to him for a while now. And they really thought the people I can see us going into trouble. Why is he so much in a whole fire hurry to get this present very fast? Every piece of legislation that the O D A has come up with. There's been a hurry for that truth. The plan behind it. It is a plan behind it. Give away as much of this computer asset as you can, my man, you love it. Give it away to your friend. Because the PLP is dying in wait. And by the time they take the golden, they need to make the work around. It's an awesome, great plan. We give you an empty golden, an empty shell to work with. You try to fill it up again. Heard somebody say on the talk show, and even tonight I've heard himself. That hardy coloration started to a lot of talk. But you know, the wrong with the I P N is is either. I've never known a killer to be free of poverty and by others. And I know. And I can tell you where there are often this. Where? Yacht club? Camera number? Those are hard, rest of us. Rested for a long time. We have single hobby, thing going on and, uh, weird. You, we need that. And they can no go back there again. We have a single hobby. Meeting in these different offices. And planning out what they can do next to keep children in space. To bury in our place. These people are getting out of hand. Let us keep them in that place, let us, let, let us keep the hand down. Let them know that we are there to control. And nobody can take that control home. And if we look at the move that's been going on, that they're going to do. The working will go out there. All I can say, be up there. We want to watch my talk. Any other good questions?
Question.
Do you have a question?
Good evening. Uh, special, special, you say, C C C personality.
Peter.
My question to my audience is that you see evidence of C C C people being around side every week. We also see evidence that O D A is doing nothing. My question to the audience, that you guys here are O D A. Okay. I put down a question. Everything that is known as the O D A. Airport, government, sovereign, we open up. Two thousand seventeen, that's when the national action started to go off. America's start, very close to the end. My question is, the L P class of all. What do you guys have anything to do in private contract?
Thank you, uh, Steve. Thank you, Steve, for the question. Uh, and it's a very important question. Because the fact matter is that, let me tell you how these companies write their contracts. They write their contracts and it's so painful for you to get out. That you, that it costs you more money to stay in. And that's why it's important that you don't get to that place in the first place. That's why it's important. And, and the fact of the matter is that, because I understand that we, we had roofless towers, a third tunnel in the airport. We had T V theaters, we prepared an ever, we educated people, we had this wonderful place to continue. Because people need to understand how bad of deal this is for this country. And the fact of the matter is, once again, when you take into account, if you get people who never agree with the PLP. Who agree with the PLP on this one, they will know that there's something that is not right. So to answer your question, when the election comes, should we become the government? If this contract is placed, you will see the best level. But the fact is that they are not suited. They are a, the largest construction company and have them for a reason. They're not going to business. And clearly, as you can see, they have fooled the white box which is in this country. Clearly, they have, because the other guys, they're masking their, they're putting on their logo and saying they have news, on the numbers and all the rest. Clearly, they have been sold and they are going to get rid of them at the end. Just responsible, the young man, not set, because I think it's very important. Because we have to make sure that we educate and we give up. But we also have to remember that there are people who will say and repeat that the progressive labor party doesn't know what we're talking about. And me, the young man, um, little kid who asked what my brother's office, I thought, doesn't have a clue. But I have to laugh, and this is it, and I just have to share a story. I heard him talking about, you know, um, I guess the, I guess it was the elements which you want to go by, that's what he talked to me. That might have been before my time. But just as a sign, we last week, you know, a lot of us stayed and talked about how unreported rate is going down. This means that we are a progress in this country. And I was, I remember I was being in my house, I was saying, I'm not trying to do any politics, they have money, get organized and all of this. And I read the statement, and I remember the news media called me, and I said, "I'm not doing this for I, say, I got something to do. I'll give you a video later, I'll give you a photo all over later." And then when I read the numbers, I remember the hall was right after, like, "I'll see you at three o'clock." Because I was actually upset. Because someone who is supposed to speak truth to the people of this country. Got up and said that there are less people working in the unit in twenty fifteen than there's twenty fourteen and his partners. And yes, sir, people believe that. They do. And then when I, I might say, you know, of course, you know, the course was, oh, he's, oh, he's fresher, smooth. He doesn't understand economics. Now, yesterday is his day, bro. Nice, right, light black senior that I, his name is Peter Callosi. Said the exact same thing which I said. And it was quite funny to see the reaction from the state of Congress. Oh, so well, oh, wow, these numbers aren't as good as people are, they don't go above. See, the fact of the matter is, do not let the people fool you. That my leader doesn't know what he's talking about. Do not let the people fool you that progressive labor party don't know what he's talking about. We take our time, we do our research, we are famous for that, and we talk and we speak because we know the good. But we do not let them sell you down that door, because that's not what we want to do. We are going through the hard work which is required to get our country back to where it's seen. There is no question that the locus of the deadline of this government is to make this country too expensive for us accidents for millions. So us accidents for millions, avenues in England, so the millions by choice can come here and replace us. We see this, we see that, that's what they're doing. And we need to make sure that we do everything to stop them from doing what we're doing to this country.
In answer to your question, uh, for what is wrong? And the almost all prevention is required of harm to people. I like to keep things simply because my body will survive just on. And it goes back to what I said time and time again. We cannot allow our airport to be privatized. It's not about we can't, we should fight for our airport to be un-privatized. We do not allow our airport to be privatized. However you feel, so that is what, what is hopeless by anything is necessary. And I say that because I'm tired. Uh, maybe you, I know that there's some bums, some people I can't say. But I have heard time and time again, of people so frustrated about this deal, that they're talking about shutting the island down. I can't tell you shut the island down, but I heard people say it. But one thing I'll say is I live this free. Now, I'm not getting you trouble. But this is something that, just as our normality, especially as he is about, just here was right, the fight was right. I'm passionate about our airport, I'm passionate about our country. I should not be totally compromised in my, my holiday here, that gets to see us get our airport back. Thirty-five years? I'm ready to retire. I'm going on service. But the thing is, at the, at the end of the day. I have a feeling that what we're all to see. If the O D A charged the person a sole source. Tender process. No R P. No value for money says. I have a feeling that the story I have of, of the beautiful. I have a feeling that that might become the part of the day two. The young man talking about shutting streets down at block hall. The most effective, the most effective campaign I've seen about that is nobody knows. And I have a feeling that they're watching. I have a feeling that they have their finger on the pulse. I have a feeling that the unions will let this happen. And our union, they have a strong force in this country.
I'm going to take lessons again. Only for the time you do that. Um, and I'm not really being hard on my colleagues. But the European, the European have ended the marriage since they have been government. And my duty is when we return, we must scrutinize every single solitary, ungrups decision that they made. And do everything within our power to reflect. I'm not, I'm not going to listen to that. Because I believe we have some of the brightest minds on the planet. And even though, he can hear his mind be quiet. Some people need this, they're dealing with, they're so proud. And I believe the table that not both. And I'm not he or God and I, and you, and I'm the same. If you know, if you should just not accept. You're reading, you're right, and I'm gonna go with it. No, we must stand up and try and change some things. Has we ever been very proud? And I don't know if any of you have any collective memory. I do. I do. And they've gone every step of the way. I'm very proud of them, you know. I watched the news last night, and I watched the CEOs of the beautiful Georgia. And that being, I'm very proud of whoever that I'm here to, you know, purely non-deshated reporters of this country. That being true, and what I need to be proud of, myself, ninety percent of the people are really, and I'm the only one from the world. And two stars, they don't want to say anything about. You know, the people that, that one thing in the United States, talk about how the border is one thing. She drops status when I wasn't walking. It's a fact. I'm just saying, you know, all of us, all of us have to question and be aware. Do you remember something that don't give you a break? It happened, you lived it, don't let it slide. And I'm just saying, you know, we, we can change things. Whether the bus that is fired, the liberal, have operated in the political way. Next, we are of the system we have. Yes, we do that, no, no. There are classes to do a program out there. And I invite you to do so.